Good afternoon. My name is Doug Shipman and I would like to welcome each and every one of you here to the Atlanta City Hall, to the City Council chambers, on this wonderful occasion of welcoming our newest member to the Atlanta City Council, the Honorable Ishay Collins. I would briefly note before I outline the program that today marks another step in the wonderful journey of democracy, of a fair and orderly election, a peaceful transition of power, and given that today is January 6th, that is no trivial matter. We have a number of speakers who will briefly bring their remarks or their, we also have a video tribute, but to lead us off, I would like to invite the Reverend Eric V. Thomas, the pastor of St. Peter Missionary Baptist Church, to come forward and to provide our opening invocation.
If you would on this occasion, if you just, if you would, put your hand on the clothes of the person next to you, I know a lot of viruses out there, but put your hands on their, on a sleeve or something. Let us pray. Most holy in our lives, God our Father, we come today to say thank you. We thank you, Lord, for the manifestation of this day that you ordained in times past. We thank you, Lord, for this, your servant Ishay Collins, who you have blessed this city with for years. We thank you, Lord, for what you placed into her, and we thank you, Lord, for giving her the willingness and the desire to share what you placed in her. We thank you, Lord, for every lesson she's learned, every, everything she's shared, and we pray, God, now as she moves to this place and to serve here, the people of Atlanta from the Atlanta City Council. We pray, God, that you continue to give her the guidance, Lord, that only you can, continue to give her the strength that only you can, and continue, Lord, to elevate her, Lord, that she may be a blessing and a benefit to the entirety of this city. We pray, God, that you protect her physically, emotionally, strengthen her spiritually, that she may become all that you have called her to be. We thank you, Lord, for those who are gathered here, we thank you for this council, and pray, God, your blessings upon this council, our mayor, and this city. We're trusting you, and we know, God, that you are able to do exceedingly abundantly more than we ask or think, and so in advance, we say thank you. We thank you for Ishay, and ask, God, that you bless her even now in a mighty way. It's in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
There are many elected officials and important folks here today, from the city, from the county, from the state. If we were to allow each and every one of them who wanted to speak, we would be here until 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock. So the program is designed to be representative of several of the bodies that wanted to participate. So I'm going to announce what you are going to see in the night, invite the speakers just to come up in the order that they are called without me coming back to the podium. First, we're going to have a video presentation, then we're going to have remarks by the Honorable Jason Estevez from Georgia State Senate District 6, then Dr. Vassam Tinsley, President-Elect of the National Alumni Association of Spelman College, the Atlanta Chapter, then Dr. Rosalyn Harper, President of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the Atlanta Alumni Chapter, and then finally, in the speaker order, will be our Mayor, 61st Mayor of Atlanta, the Honorable Andre Dickens. So with that, I would ask that we roll the video.
I am otherwise qualified.
And I am otherwise qualified.
To hold this office.
To hold this office.
By the Constitution.
By the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of Atlanta.
Of the City of Atlanta.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
She's the newest member of the Atlanta City Council. Ishay Collins is officially sworn in for the post-three-at-large seat, left vacant when Keisha Waits stepped down last year. Collins is a former member of the Atlanta School Board, a civil rights attorney, and is the Director of the Equity Assistance Center South at the Southern Education Foundation. On this very busy day, she's taking part in official headshots.
Okay, nice, yeah, that looks good.
Staff introductions and chats with current council members, followed by a series of trainings on everything from filing campaign disclosures, a summary of the legislative process and ethics, to open records.
Everything you do is, is open, subject to Open Records and Open Meetings Act, meaning that any documents you send or anything you send, we can release to the public, so we want to make sure she's familiar with those laws and requirements.
Collins also received a demonstration on how to vote using the electronic legislative management system, so she's ready for her first full council meeting.
Oh, thank God, this is so cute.
The mic's not on unless it's red.
Yep.
So that's the most important thing.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
One quick comment, I'm committing, you are allowed to make a motion or a second as chair.
Okay. There is a learning curve, but what I can say for a council member, Collins, is she's a bit ahead of what would be a typical council member, being a former elected official or prior elected official with the Atlanta Board of Education. So there's a lot of training that we would go over today and content, it's required, but somewhat of a refresher for her. So she's already a few steps ahead of what a new incoming council member would experience.
That prior experience will serve Collins well as she dives into the inner workings of a council and the legislation that will impact the citizens of Atlanta. She says she wants to be a voice for the marginalized and advocate for those who are trying to make ends meet.
I'm a true daughter of this city, I was born and raised here. I'm a Crawford Long baby. I grew up in the East Atlanta area. My mom, that many people have had the opportunity to meet, she's 75 now, well, you know, single, single working mom raising four of us in the Eastlake area, and, you know, my childhood would just want of service, just seeing my, you know, mother struggle in making decisions on where to educate us, how to best advocate for us fighting for, you know, food scarcity and addressing food deserts in our community, there's just a level of activism, I think, that was just embedded in me early on. I was a gifted student, and so, you know, interesting story is my zone schools at that time didn't have a gifted program, and so my mother sent me to live with my grandmother right down the street, right down Second Avenue while I went to school, and that's how I graduated from Druid Hills, you know Druid Hills High School. I would graduate from high school, went to Spelman College, and became a teacher at Atlanta Public Schools right out of, right out of college, and I taught at A.D. Williams Elementary at that time, which was in the back of Bonn Homes, Bonn Homes Housing Community, and I had the honor of serving children and meeting families and parents whose lives mirrored my own.
When public housing closed throughout the city, her school was also closed down. She says it served as a catalyst for her to go to law school, where she focused on educational advocacy. This work has cemented her stance and informed her decision to serve on the Atlanta School Board, and she says it's the reason she's excited about her role on the Atlanta City Council.
We're constantly in a state of status quo, that's not going to work for a city as diverse as Atlanta is, and I want to be at the table to ensure that we are meeting the needs of everyone, and that everyone in this city know they have city leadership that's going to ensure their voices at the table, that their interest is being considered, that their lives are easier because we, as their elected leadership, has made things easier for all of us just to thrive in this city.
Thank you. Isn't it amazing that Ishay has been able to maintain that beautiful smile throughout all these years? That smile is the same smile you have today, Ishay. Council President Shipman, to the Atlanta City Council members here today, to the citizens of Atlanta, it is my honor and my pleasure to be celebrating my sister, my good friend, one of my ride or dies, Ishay P. Collins, as she gets sworn in as an at-large representative on the Atlanta City Council. Ishay, we've come a long way, councilwoman, we've come a long way. My name is Jason Estevez, and I am proud to be here. Y'all, I was so excited and anxious about this race that on election night, those results were coming in too slow, and I was texting some of y'all trying to get some insight, and y'all weren't responding. So at 9:30 at night, I started driving around northwest Atlanta, looking at the polling tapes to see how she did, and I came away with some good feelings. Now, what's funny is that Ishay is now coming in as the at-large representative for post-three, and all these years that we've been on the, on the school board together, she would always tell me how at-large members had it easy. Councilman Bond, Councilman Westmoreland, she, she would say, "We, you have it easy. Us district folks have to work way harder than y'all do," right? Well, a couple months into the election, she calls me, and she's like, "Jason, this is crazy. I don't know how you do this all across the city." And all I could say was, "Uh-huh, I told you." Now, Ishay and I go way back, we had seen each other as former educators, and shout out to all of my educators out here today. We'd see each other in attorney and lawyer circles, but we really got to know each other along with Councilman Matt Westmoreland and Courtney English and Byron Amis, Stephen Lee, as candidates for the Atlanta Public Schools Board of Education. All my APS alums and employees and alumni students, shout out to y'all. And that was in 2013 when we were bright-eyed and idealistic about the world of politics. She was running for District 6, and I was running for seat nine at large, and it was during that time that I saw how hard of a worker Ishay Collins is. Ishay would be everywhere with that iconic smile, meeting people where they were, but I'll tell you that the biggest staple of her campaign was her family, her mom, her sisters, and I want them to stand up so they can get their shine. Y'all, her family would be everywhere, and it was at that moment that I realized that no one could beat Ishay Collins, because not only did she have the work ethic, but she had the village that it took to win. And what drives her every day is the love for this city. Ishay has been an advocate and proponent for Atlanta and its families from day one, no matter how hard the challenge or the obstacle, and there were many on the school board, and I'm sure there will be many on the city council. Ishay was prepared to take it head-on as long as it meant the outcomes would be better for Atlanta and her people. I remember when she was vice-chair of the school board and I was the chair, we'd frequently have hours of phone conversations, hours-long phone conversations, where she'd be like, "Jason, I've been getting beat up all these years, redistricting, school closures, leadership changes, a pandemic, when will it stop?" And I'd be like, "Well, Ishay, we got another issue we need to talk about." And instead of shying away or calling it quits, she would come back for more. She would come back for more as long as it meant a better life for children and their families. Her love for Atlanta came her coming back as chair of the Atlanta Public School Board, which she did a fantastic job of that for four years. And there is no doubt in my mind that she will do a fantastic job as a city council member, and I look forward to working with her to get some important things done around the city. So as Ishay, you step into this role, I want us to hold the words of James, chapter 1, verse 12. Blessed is the one who perseveres under trial, and there've been many, because having stood the test, that person will receive the crown of life. Y'all, this is more than a promise, it is a charge, a recognition that her strength and commitment are blessings, not just for her, but all of those who have benefited and will continue to benefit from her leadership. May she continue to stand firm and lead in grace with her beautiful smile.
Council Chair, members of the City Council, I greet you as the President-Elect of the National Alumni Association of Spelman College, Atlanta Chapter. I am Dr. Vasan Tinsley, and it is with immense joy that I am here today to witness the inauguration of a great professional dedicated to the community. Ishay Collins is my Spelman sister, and Spelman women lead. Spelman women do not shrink from challenges that will uplift and support the community, no matter how difficult they may be, it's in our blood. I've known Ishay for nearly 30 years, watching her develop her advocacy for the community, children, and families as a teacher at A.D. Williams Elementary School, as mentioned earlier, in Bow and Holmes, Atlanta Public Schools, and I've seen her grow later as a member and eventually the chair of the Board of Education for Atlanta Public Schools, and I am proud as a proud product of the Atlanta Public Schools, of her leadership. I've watched her make difficult decisions, stand for what is right even when it was not popular, and develop policies enhancing the education of youth, emphasizing parental involvement, while also promoting economic development and strengthening of community for APS families. As a fellow educational leader, I know this is not always easy, and it can be lonely at times, but she persevered, undaunted by the fight, as a Spelman woman would, and she will continue. Those that truly know Ishay were not in the least bit surprised when she decided to run for this seat. I recall the day that she told me that she desired to run and why, and gave me all the good reasons that this was hers. She felt that this would be a great place for her to continue her advocacy and also broaden her impact within the City of Atlanta. See, she's a doer, and I've seen her get the work done for people, for all people, for the community, and for our Atlanta. I felt then and believe now that my Spelman sister is ready for this task. She understands the importance of ethical leadership, collective voice, and community empowerment. Ishay, the Tinsley family could not be more proud of you. May peace with thee abide. Onward. You have made the choice, and as we say at Spelman, that choice was a choice to change the world.
Greetings to all who have assembled here today. I am Rosalyn Harper, President of the Atlanta Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. I am Rosalyn Harper, President of the Atlanta Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority I just have a few things to say about my sister Ishay. Ishay came to the Atlanta Alumni Chapter. She was inducted in the spring of 2022. I almost said 1922. 2022. And since that time, she has been a worker in Delta. Because as Deltas, that's what we do. We work. We are public servants. We work to serve this community, to better the community. So that's what Ishay is going to bring to city council. She's got a good start. She has led the scholarship committee of our chapter. And last year, we were able to award $100,000 in scholarships to graduates of Atlanta City High School. Ishay, I want you to know that we in Delta are very proud of you. And we are going to do everything and anything that we can to support you, as we always do this entire council. The Atlanta Alumni Chapter, our Delta Sigma and Delta Sigma Theta, have had a presence in City Hall and on this council since the first Maynard Jackson administration. Bunny Jackson was First Lady of this city. Then we had Emma Darnell, Myrtle Davis, Carolyn Long Banks, Cleta Winslow. The list goes on and on. Keisha Lance Bottoms, exact chapter member. Yes. It goes on and on. Shirley Franklin. So we've always had a presence. And now, and we've always supported our half-sisters over here, too. We've got two half-sisters sitting over there, too. We love our half-sisters now. And during the last election, D-9 showed up. And we showed up strong to support our sister in D-9. So now, we don't care what color you wear, whether you wear red or faded red, which is pink. We love you anywhere. We're gonna always support you, okay? We're gonna always support you. But once again, Ishay, we're so proud to have your presence here. And Overstreet, Councilwoman Overstreet, and C.T. Martinschak. Councilwoman Boom. Okay, C.T. was always our friend. We're here for you, too. Okay. Once again, thank you so much for all the support that you have given Ishay during this hard race. It was a hard race, a hard and long race, but she fought, and she fought well. We're so proud of you. Congratulations, Ishay. Do you all want me to present, to unveil? Okay, we have a little token for you. Yes. So Sarah Patterson is going to unveil. Now, this is something that we are giving her for her office. It's a mixed media artwork that Delta Sigma Theta has, Alpha Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta, which was Howard University, had commissioned. And it represents and commemorates Delta Sigma Theta's first act of public service in 1913, participation in the Suffrage March in Washington, DC. This is how it all began, in 1913. And we were the only women of color to participate in the Suffrage March. So this artwork depicts and represents and commemorates our participation in that march. We've always been about public service. Thank you, Ishay.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon. To council president Shipman and to the colleagues on the Atlanta City Council, it's good to be here with all of you today, to all the current elected officials and judges that I see here, the state representatives and senators, and to the many, I see commissioners in the audience as I'm scanning around. And I see Shirley Franklin, our previous mayor. Give Shirley a round of applause. Shirley Clark Franklin is a Delta, too, right? All right. I didn't know I came in at the, you know, I just came out to cap out the size. Founder's Day was yesterday, January 5th. J5 was yesterday, so all this fraternity sorority banter is good for my soul. I wish I wore red today. Me and our COO, Lashandra Burke, she's a Delta, and so she's happy. Wave your hand. She's proud of you as well, Ishay. So we are here today, obviously, I know all has been said so much about our wonderful friend, Ishay Collins. And so I'm so, you know, excited about you coming onto the city council. You and I have worked together in so many capacities. We both were elected at the same time, you to the school board and me to city council. And now we get to work together here in this same building, under the same rules of engagement of the city hall. And so I'm so thankful because in the times when I was a city council member and you were a school board member, we could call each other, we could work together. We worked together on that legislation that I put together in the city and you put together on the school board around making sure that we had a joint commission for the school board and the city council to work together each and every quarter. And you were a contributor to that and a supporter of that. We've worked together at Invest Atlanta, on the Board of Invest Atlanta, and so many other things. And I'm so honored that now you get to serve in the seat that I sat in for eight years. That's post-three at large. You're now post-three at large. So I'm so proud of you. You fought a hard race. You've continued to look out for the community, and you've gone over and beyond to make sure that the voice of the community is heard at the school board. And so now you bring your talents over here to the Atlanta City Council, to the school board members that are here. We will continue to have a fantastic relationship with the Atlanta Public School Board. Right now, the city of Atlanta and the Atlanta Public School Board have produced the highest graduation rate in the city's history together. And so now, we have Ishay Collins, Byron Amis, Matt Westmoreland. Anybody else? If anybody else decided to go from school board to city council? All y'all bringing your talents over here to be a part of the city council only makes our youth development goals that much more attainable. And all of our community rejoices when we have a full city council now, with all 15 members plus the council president. So thank you. Thank you, Ishay. I'm so proud of you. I look forward to serving with you. And all of the community is looking forward to what you will do on behalf of Atlanta. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, speakers. I would like to take a moment just so that we can, so that you can see the kind of outpouring here today. If you are a current or former elected official, could you just please stand and be recognized? I want you to see how many leaders are in this room. So now it is my pleasure to ask the Honorable Justice Verda Colvin, Georgia Supreme Court, to come forward and the Honorable Ishay Collins, Atlanta City Council Post Three at Large, to come forward for the oath of office.
Thank you. Before I do the oath, I'd like to take this personal point of privilege to just give a few remarks about the person who I know, your Councilwoman Collins. You know, they say spirit knows the spirit. She doesn't know what I'm about to say, but I speak truth. And so they say the spirit knows the spirit. So I didn't know before today that we're both Crawford Long babies. I am a native Atlantan. In addition to that similarity, we both went to a women's college. In addition to that, she represented district in which the school that I graduated from, Daniel M. Thero High School. So when I met her, there's something about her that's so genuine. It is said that if service is beneath you, then leadership is beyond you. Councilwoman Collins, she is everything that a public servant should be. She genuinely serves the public. I have seen her, without her noticing, how she interplays with everyone, from a student to an elected official to a constituent. She's the same every day. And in a world where people change based upon the particular needs to suit themselves, that is admirable. And I want to point something out. When she was doing this slideshow, that I don't think she knew everything that would be in it. If you notice, she never said "me." She never said "I." She said "we," and she said "they," her constituents. And because of that, like I told her in a text, an email, I know that Atlanta is in good hands, and I am so incredibly proud of you representing what service should be about the people, and God bless you in everything you do. And so now, I am privileged to do the oath of office for our Councilwoman, Ms. Ishay Collins. If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, Ishay Collins.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
Of the city of Atlanta, Georgia.
Of the city of Atlanta, Georgia.
I will not knowingly.
I will not knowingly.
Permit my vote.
Permit my vote.
To be influenced.
To be influenced.
By fear.
By fear.
Favor.
Favor.
Affections.
Affections.
Or reward.
Or reward.
And in all things.
And in all things.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
I will be governed.
I will be governed.
By the public good.
By the public good.
And the interests of the city.
And the interests of the city.
I will observe.
I will observe.
The provisions.
The provisions.
Of the charter.
Of the charter.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And regulations.
And regulations.
Of the city of Atlanta.
Of the city of Atlanta.
And I will support.
And I will support.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
And of the state of Georgia.
And of the state of Georgia.
I am not the holder.
I am not the holder.
Of any office of trust.
Of any office of trust.
Under the government.
Under the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of the state of Georgia.
Of the state of Georgia.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I am prohibited.
Which I am prohibited.
From holding.
From holding.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
I am not the holder.
I am not the holder.
Of any unaccountable.
Of any unaccountable.
For public money.
For public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
I have been a resident.
I have been a resident.
Of the city of Atlanta.
Of the city of Atlanta.
And the council district post three.
And the council post district three.
At large.
At large.
For the time required.
For the time required.
And I am otherwise.
And I am otherwise.
Qualified to hold.
Qualified to hold.
This office.
This office.
By the Constitution and the laws.
By the Constitution and the laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And ordinances of the city of Atlanta.
And ordinances of the city of Atlanta.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilwoman Collins and Atlanta.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So I need to sign it, right?
Yes, she wants to sign. That's why I did want to take pictures. So you sign it first.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and here we are. Before I begin, I do want to just take a personal privilege to acknowledge my colleagues that I've had the honor of serving on the Atlanta Board of Education. If you are here in the room, could you please stand again for me? Thank you. Thank you so much, Board Member Aretha Baldwin, Board Member Cynthia Briscoe Brown, and then, of course, my colleagues that we've transitioned over the years, and to Mayor Andre Dickens, President Doug Shipman, my council colleagues, my family friends, my talented team. Thank you, Vanessa Manley. Thank you, Erica Pines. Thank you, Dana Holmes, Akilah's staff, invited guests, and the great citizens of this great city of Atlanta. Thank you for being here and sharing this moment with me. Your presence means more than words can truly express. And I hope you felt the joy and energy that filled the room downstairs, especially during the reception and the incredible performance and music that's been provided by our, by Atlanta future leaders, the talented students of Daniel Thera High School and their Venture Panther record. I want to give them some shine. Their music shaped under the guidance of the dedicated educator, Mr. Samuel Davis. Mr. Davis, are you in the room? Want you to, he's in the back. Thank you so much. And supported, I wanted to make this clear, the work being supported by the Save the Music Foundation and the Music Education Group is a testament to what happens when passion truly meets opportunity. And so I would love for you all to continue to uplift these young audiences and our, these young artists and our students as they pursue their dreams. And so today, I stand here humbled and honored and filled with deep gratitude as your post-three at-large city council representative. This isn't just about me. It's about all of us and the belief that our beloved city's best days are ahead of us, fueled by community and true dedication. Growing up in Atlanta, I learned early on that service starts at home. And as you've seen through the video and testimony through others, I watched my mother, my family, and my community lead with heart, standing with what's right and lifting others in all ways, big and small. You might say I grew up understanding the assignment and helping others became a way of life for us. From my first days teaching in Atlanta Public Schools to advocating for equity on the Atlanta Board of Education, those lessons of compassion, justice, and hard work have guided me every step of the way. And I believe something happens when you live a life of service. Your eyes are open to the plight of others. Your mind begins to generate ideas and formulas that can truly solve problems. Your heart pumps with a renewed sense of purpose. And our path hasn't been easy, Atlanta. But Atlanta is a city that knows how to rise. When we come together, rolling up our sleeves with grit and grace, progress isn't just possible, it's inevitable. And I firmly believe together, we're going to make sure that every resident has a home they can afford and a chance to thrive in our growing economy. We're going to protect our communities from being pushed out by rising costs and instead create pathways to build stability and legacy. We'll take bold actions to face the realities of transit inequity and sustainability, making sure everyone in this city can easily access all the things that make Atlanta beautiful. Our neighborhoods are resilient, and our future is greener and safer. and our future is greener and safer. And when it comes to supporting every neighborhood, we will lead with a holistic approach, one that focuses on trust, access to mental health resources, stronger partnerships, and opportunities for every young person to chart a true path to success. And so today, you all, I stand on the shoulders of those who came before me from civil rights leaders, and we acknowledge Mayor Franklin that is here with us, to everyday heroes who fought to make Atlanta what it is, and to my family and community, who are my roots and wings, and to each of you who have placed your trust in me, I just simply say thank you. When I reflect on my preparation to get to this point, I know I am loved, and I know my endeavors are always supported. And this is an, this, this, this opportunity to serve on this council is one I will not take for granted. I believe in my lifetime that this city could be a place where everyone thrives, no matter your socioeconomic status, no matter how much money you make, no matter your zip code or where you live in this city. And I recognize the magnitude of this effort. And I know this is a heavy lift, perhaps one Herculean in nature. But to my council colleagues, you have in me a true collaborator who supports the priorities that your districts have expressed. And I want to ensure that my success is our success. In Atlanta, I am ready to help write a new chapter for our city, a story of resilience, unity, and possibility. I am ready to listen, to serve, and continue to fight for an Atlanta that works for all of us. And I mean for absolutely all of us. So let's get to work together. Thank you all so much for sharing this special day with me. I love each and every one of you, and thank you so much.
I want to thank everyone for being here, for participating in this great event. We will now adjourn this session and move to our regularly scheduled meeting and put Councilmember Collins to work.